This is the Planning Commission meeting, August the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Almost four P M. And I'm gonna call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is public comments. So if you have a comment and you wanna step forward, please step forward. Give us your name and the area of the county you live in. Who wants to go first? Or does anybody wanna speak?
I wanna explain myself and what we're planning to do there. At the corner there of Goose Pond and Highway fifty-three. Me and my wife Lacy own Complete Exteriors.
Your name, please.
Justin Kuhn.
Okay.
My wife's back here. She's a longtime resident of Coffey County. So is her family and parents and all. But we own Complete Exteriors and Shady Grove Homes. Right now, we are currently operating out of a little house there on the farm. And it's on a dead end road, so it's very little visibility to anybody. So all we're wanting to do is move out on a more visible.
Mr. Kuhn, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you. And the reason I'm gonna stop you is you're gonna get a chance to say all that when you present your request, if you don't mind.
Okay, I thought that, I thought this was.
No, no, I'm sorry, I should've, I should've clarified that. Now you have a little bit of chance to think about a little more what you're gonna say. Any other public comments? Now, this is the public comment section here for the Planning Commission. Once this is over, there'll be no more public comments. Okay. We're gonna move on to the approval. Yes, come ahead, ma'am.
My name is Donna West Fletcher, and I own a farm in the Goose Pond community. My son farms my farm. And he also leases land from several of the other landowners on Goose Pond Road. And that's already a very heavily traveled road. It's very dangerous with your farm equipment trying to get in and out. You have to nearly get out in the road and flag for the trucks and trailers to get out of the fields and everything. And Goose Pond has been a farming community for as long as I have known it. And my farm is nearing, being a century farm, which means it's been in our family for almost hundred years. And we do not want to see the community get commercialized. We want to see it stay agriculture as it has been. We, we are proud of our community. We have, most of these people in here are related in some form or fashion, cousins by marriage or, or not. And we're, we're proud of our community and we want to keep that as is. And I am opposed to changing the zoning to commercial. I'm very much opposed to that.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I'm not much at speaking, but I've lived at Goose Pond all my life.
Name, please.
Ernest, Ernest West.
Thank you.
And I've lived at Goose Pond all my life. And I own the property adjacent to the property that was sold. And I like our little community. And it's been agriculture. It was agriculture when it was sold. And I feel like I really want it to stay agriculture because I just, especially me right there. I, I own the whole, the whole back of this property that was sold. And I, I wouldn't, I don't wanna see it rezoned, but that's just, that's me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I'm James Austin, and I have lived there and owned property right there two doors down from the Lewis property for about thirty-eight years. So when we, I call now Goose Pond Road, it used to be a Highway fifty-three. The traffic's moved there, that's how it is. You better not pull out without double looking because they're running eighty miles an hour up and down there all the time. So the thing is, if we rezone this here, well, if we're gonna put in stores, well, we got a dollar store to the right and a dollar store to the left. We're gonna put a service station in there, well, we got a service station right there at Deer Field. We got a service station right up there at Greens Best Way. So the thing is, I really don't see what we need to rezone it. I don't think we need condominiums and apartments there. You got plenty of that going on here in Manchester. So the thing is, I'm opposed to it. Because whenever you can rezone, you can pretty well do what you want to, and that's the way it is. And I'm against that because I think we need to leave the communities like they are. Stay where y'all passed it. Don't redevelop something less than five acres of land, and I'm opposed to it.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Dawn Kill. I live at two-on-two Goose Pond Road. My wife has lived there all of her life. It's our old family farm. And I'll tell you, we live right there at the bridge where the Duck River is. And the traffic, like Mr. Austin said, is terrible. They run seventy, eighty mile an hour. We saw two passing today, racing. Try to get off on that highway, if you're going toward Manchester, you better look to the right, not just to the left. Because they're passing right there on that straightaway. I'm telling you, fine. It's a dangerous intersection. It's no place for a commercial building. I've seen the plans that he submitted. It's very nice, and I'm not against a residential home being there. But commercial, no. It's just not a good place. That's rural area, it's farmland. And I'm opposed to it. And another thing I wanna ask. I thought you were supposed to put a sign out on the property.
No, sir. That's, that's the city that does that.
Okay.
Did you not get, did everybody get a letter that?
No.
That's all that we're required to do is the, but it looks like everybody got the word.
We got it by word of mouth, and our neighbors passed it around. But anyway, I'm opposed to it.
Thank you.
Is there gonna be anything about the five acres or the carve-outs tonight?
I'm sorry.
The carve-outs on the five acres?
We're going to discuss that after we get through with, it will be on, it's on the agenda after the rezoning request comes up. That's my phone. Your time's up, by the way. Anybody else?
I'm Joseph Capps. Own the property just to the south of point in question. It's boarded yellow there. And I don't know, I guess I'll start out by saying I, I don't have, I don't have feelings either way at this point. I have more questions and concerns about what's happened so far and where this is headed. As a commercial piece of property, that bothers me because you can see from the, from that image, it's quite obvious. Everything environmentally from that piece of property goes to my property. So I have a lot of concerns there. And I, I wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to add, to ask or answer, or get questions answered after this public portion. Because I'm here to learn, because I don't know what's going on. Don't understand your process, actually. And I'd like to know what, what the plans are.
And we will discuss those when we get to that item.
As, as was said, I'm not opposed to a house being built there, obviously. That's, that's not an issue. But making it commercial, I, I'm not sure what's going on. I'm just, just here to learn.
Okay.
So, and we will be able to ask questions at a later point in the meeting?
Not supposed to, but let's wait and get there and we'll see what happens, okay?
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. That's the end of public comments. We're gonna move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
To approve the agenda.
Hold second.
I have a second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any more discussion on the agenda? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Passes unanimously. If you had a chance to read the previous minutes, I would call for a motion to approve the previous minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the previous minutes by Ms. Gonzalez.
I make a second.
I have a second for Ms. Vasquez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose. Unanimously. Kurt? Bond review? No bond reviews. Okay. We're going to get to the request for the rezoning. A-one to C-one, thirty-nine Goose Pond Road, Shady Grove Home. There, there you go.
Sorry about that.
That's not your fault.
I'm new to all this. Uh, I'm Justin Kuhn. And as I was saying, we own Complete Exteriors. Uh, we do siding and roofing. And Shady Grove Homes is just new, we just started. I think we built five houses in the last two years, so we're not a major developer, as a lot of people are saying. But we're currently operating out of our little house on the farm, and we have zero exposure. So we're wanting to go out to the corner here and remove the old house and put our office there so we have a little exposure to the public. And as far as commercial like you are thinking, it's not like that. It's literally a office where myself and these two guys over here and my secretary can go to work. That's it. And we want, just wanna be able to put a sign by the road so people know we exist, basically. We've got a state highway right there. We've got water, we've got everything we need. Um, we believe that it's a good fit.
Are you gonna have any of the building supplies there?
Everything I do is shipped straight to the job site. I mean, I might have a couple of columns in the garage part of the barn dominium. Some shutters maybe, but as far as any building supplies, we will not have any there. It is just a place to park the company trucks, and they will be inside the building. And then a place for us to meet for work every day.
What size building are you talking about making?
I think the building is fifty by eight.
Fifty by eighty?
Fifty by eighty, yeah. It's a, the front would face Highway fifty-three. And that would be like where the living quarters would be of the barn dominium. That's the part we'll make the office. And then the garage in the back is, and we'll, it would be a side entry. And we would actually come in off of Goose Pond Road. And that's where we would access it, because it would be a side entry garage. So we would access it off of Goose Pond Road, but it would face Highway fifty-three.
So you're not gonna have any entrance coming off of Highway fifty-three?
Have you done any like water runoff study? Because like your neighbor to the south there, you can definitely tell that there's a creek that runs straight into it or a drainage ditch.
I mean, everything, there's a, right there where that dark spot is, um, on the bottom side of the lot, there's a little gathering pond or something right there. There's a big old pipe that goes under Highway fifty-three right there. So that's where all the water goes through there.
Goes down yours and then the end of that pond.
And that whole, all that backside towards Ernie over there is all hill. It's all hill up there where the number thirty-two is. So.
How big is that piece of property again?
Three point three acres.
Okay.
And we would be mindful of setbacks. I think Highway fifty-three will be four lane all the way down through there, especially if the mega site comes in. So we will make sure that we allow plenty of room for all of that, too.
What about the buildings in front? You leaving those?
Those will have to come down, that's where the offices sit.
Okay.
Uh, we'll have to, I think the setbacks are fifty foot off of Goose Pond Road, so that house is only thirty. So we'll actually be over kinda where the little tan-looking storage building is. Uh, just right there in line with Ernie's house, probably.
Where's, you can see that where it runs down through here, the drainage comes down and then like I say underneath.
Yep.
What's gonna happen with all this drainage?
Well, none of that's gonna, none of that's gonna change.
You're not gonna have it, anything there to stop it?
No, nothing's gonna change at all on that.
Do you not gonna add up a large parking lot or anything that may collect?
No, I mean, it'd be my truck and my son's truck and my secretary's SUV.
I feel like if it was owned down Goose Pond and in the middle of the community, it would probably be a bigger concern. But it is on Woodbury Highway, and it already, it does have two schools, two Dollar Generals, get multiple gas stations.
And it.
Is the Massey Ferguson place still over there?
Not far down the road.
Not far down the road. I mean, it's, it's a highway.
We've also got all trucking.
It's a pretty good commercial highway.
Right there.
As for the speeding, that sounds like a sheriff's job.
Yeah.
I'd be getting the sheriff out there to be watching the speeding.
That's a problem on every road.
Well, I know that's a bad area, because my daughter got rear-ended right there, total, total, both vehicles when she was turning on Goose Pond Road.
Sounds like there needs to be a deputy out there.
Yeah, it does.
It is all, everything from three parcels up all the way back into town is all. I mean, you're only talking about extending it three parcels.
Multiple commercial zones down through there. And the good news is if they turn on Goose Pond, they're just turning on the first lot on the road. They're not going down the road to the middle.
Any other questions?
Anybody got any other questions?
Yes, I guess, what made you wanna just rezone it versus just getting a variance to put a different building on it?
I just feel like that's the right thing to do.
I have a question. Can he build that building and run his business out of it without it becoming commercial?
Could be a variant.
To do that.
To do.
Okay, that's what, that's why he's asking for it, because to get his business there, he would have to rezone. I'm gonna get Ms. Gonzalez, if she doesn't mind, to read the district description of a C-one, if you don't mind doing that, Anna, I'd appreciate it.
C-one, the rural center district recognizes the need to provide the areas within Coffey County where residents for more isolated agricultural and rural residence districts and residents located beyond the limits of service can receive certain merchandising and technical services. In Coffey County, several small rural centers exist primarily to provide such convenience goods and services to residents of the surrounding areas. These centers serve a necessary economic function, and the mixed land uses that characterize these centers are not particularly detrimental. This district is intended to be a flexible zone, which is necessarily, necessary in a rural center. It is designed to allow for change and growth within these areas, but also to prevent this mixture of land uses from unnecessarily spreading into the adjacent countryside. This district shall be allowed only on roadways classified as either a collector or arterial as shown on the major thoroughfare plan of Coffey County. The following regulations shall apply in the C-one rural center district as defined on zoning map of Coffey County, Tennessee.
Thank you.
Which I would say Woodbury Highway is a pretty collector.
Woodbury Highway is, I mean.
Yeah, it is arterial.
It's a corner lot, and it's on Woodbury Highway. I'm, Kurt, uh, just a question. Would he need to enter that property from Woodbury Highway?
Yes, for his business.
For his business, okay. Did you understand that?
I mean, that, that's not a problem, I can.
Yeah, well, that would.
Just change the layout.
Yeah, because that's arterial Goose Ponds, isn't. That's what I was asking, yeah. And that's what I was asking about that drainage right there, because you'll need to come in off of Woodbury Highway, but you also still have to have that drainage in there.
Yeah.
Culvert.
Culvert, yeah, yeah, that's what, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it would have to have that, anything, any drive coming off of fifty-three right there.
No one's gonna like what I have to say. But this is a perfect spot for a C-one district. You've got a major highway out there, and you've got a side road. It's a corner lot.
And you got the water supply.
You've got the water supply.
Multiple businesses already on the road.
That's right. That's exactly right.
That's mainly where we're wanting, like you say, this kind of, this kind of construction stuff on major highways.
That's right.
And Woodbury Highway, fifty-three is a wood, major highway.
Any other discussion?
I make a motion uh, vote to approve it for C-one.
I have a motion to approve the change from A-one to C-one for this piece of property. Do I have a second?
Can?
Yes.
Can we make, make, uh, except for the entrance does have to come off the highway?
He'll have to, he'll.
He's got, he's got presented side plan by, by, by lots of engineer.
Okay.
That side plan will show, have to show coming off.
Coming off of Woodbury Highway. Okay. That's why I wanted to be sure, okay.
You could put that in the meetings if you want to, because to be a C-one, it has to be arterial.
Right.
That's right.
Right, that's what I say, I wanna, wanna be sure that the entrance to it does come off of Woodbury Highway.
I have a motion.
Hold second.
I have a second for Ms. Gonzalez. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? If he was to submit his plan, his engineered plan to whoever he asked to, and it got turned down, now that it is C-one.
I'm sorry, ma'am, can you speak a little bit louder?
Yes, if he was to submit his plan, like his engineering plan or whatever, and it did get turned down for some reason, now that it is C-one, could anything else go there?
Not anything. There are certain businesses that could, could, he could put another business, he could put a couple of houses in there.
It still has to go to full commission.
He still have to go to full commission for this to pass.
Yeah, it's not passed yet.
Yeah, we're just, it's our recommendation that it pass.
Yeah, he's, right, he's gotta go to the full commission now to get their approval for it, to become official.
I don't know, his business is a smaller business, and that's better than like having a gas station or McDonald's or something. That's why I was just wondering if that could go in there since now it is gonna be C-one.
There's a list of things that could go into the C-one, and.
Is that listed like on one somewhere to read?
Uh, if you can pull our codes book up, there is a list, yes.
But he's still gotta go before the county commission.
When is that meeting?
October.
October, I think.
The date for the full commission, October is.
The eighteen, I think so.
It's usually on a Tuesday at six thirty.
Is it next, second Tuesday of the week?
I would guess that meeting would be either the seventh or the fourteenth.
Is it the second or first Tuesday?
Uh.
It's the second Tuesday of.
The second Tuesday in October is the fourteenth.
If you go to the Coffey County calendar, none of us are on the board, but they do have it listed on there, um, all the commissioners' meetings.
And once they vote on it, then it can come, be zoned C-one. All we're doing is recommending it to them. They're the ones that have the final say.
A hundred percent.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
That's, that's the main one there that you can.
We have a certain set of rules that we, that we pretty much have to go by. And, but your county commissioner, you can bend his ear. The truth hurts sometimes, I'm sorry.
It's October the fourteenth at six o'clock.
And where will that meeting be held?
In here.
In the big room.
The one right next door over there, the big one?
Yeah, ma'am.
When you walk out, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's right. Ma'am, ma'am, there's a public, there will be a public hearing prior to that meeting.
The thirteenth.
Five o'clock.
The thirteenth, yeah.
Before it starts?
Yes, yes.
It'll be at five o'clock, and that's when y'all can voice your opinions.
And there should be a sign-up sheet like ours, if you wanna speak, that you sign when you get there.
Yeah, for, for anybody, for most, any county meeting you go to, to speak, you're gonna have, you have to sign in. That's just, uh, so, there you go.
And it starts at five.
War, war section, yeah.
It's usually five or five-thirty, it'll be, it'll be on the, on the website.
You'll be in the same room right before the meeting.
Yes, at six, maybe to six.
Okay, are you guys ready to talk about some zoning resolution amendments? All right. If you look at this side of this sheet, Rodney, you'll, you'll see some definitions. And this is, this comes from Amanda, our trainer. Variance, special question. For the purposes of administration of this resolution, variance shall be construed as synonymous with special questions as controlled by Section thirteen seven one oh nine Tennessee Code annotated. What we, what we need to do, if we so desire, is we need to approve this to go in the definitions.
In our book.
In our codes book. She has it just the opposite, and I guess they're talking about putting it in both places, in both places in the alphabet. Special question, variances for the purpose of this resolution. Special question, which shall be construed as synonymous with variance as controlled by blah, blah, blah. Does anybody have a problem with either one of those definitions?
No.
Cindy and Kurt, the way I understood, uh, the mayor, we need to get a consensus on this, correct? So if that, if you find that acceptable, this is the easiest one to get out of the way. If you find this acceptable, I'm, I'll take a motion to approve this.
So this will be the first step of the variances for family members?
No, this, this is completely separate. This is.
This is just about the variance.
The variance and the special question.
Oh, okay.
Now, we. Is it? I noticed it says, or is this better? Are we gonna, are we talking about the top or the bottom?
No, what, what he's talking about is you see at the top, variance comes first.
Right.
And if you see at the bottom, it says special question comes first.
Okay.
The rest of it's the same. Also, if I'm correct, conditional use is pretty much the same thing, too, right? Except the conditional uses are listed.
Conditional use and special exception are the same. Slash, basically like this. Special exception.
I, I think if you, if you
And condition.
Look in the dictionary.
No, I mean, in, in our definition. Special exception, not special question. Special exception, not special question.
Special question and exception are different.
I'll look it up. I don't think it is, but we, but anyway, this is what he and Amanda say that needs to go in our definitions. So.
This way they would be able to do a variance.
Right, it, yeah, if, uh. Everybody's agreeable, I'll take a motion to accept these and put them in the, uh, put her in the definition.
I think we just got to choose one. Right.
You could do one, or I think he said you could do both and just be in two different.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, like two different sections.
Okay.
I would rather have both.
Okay.
Yes, I had two.
Searching, yeah.
Well, I make a motion that we approve this.
I got a motion from Randy to approve these. Do I have a second? Any questions, any other questions? Go ahead.
I'll second.
Oh, okay. Any more discussion?
I was reading over here.
If not, I will, uh.
Yeah.
Ask for a motion, all those in favor.
Yeah.
Of putting these into the codes book in the definitions, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, okay. We've done that one. Now turn the page over.
On the, uh, I just had some things I wanted to throw out there real quick.
Do what?
About the, the family things that we're gonna start on now.
Nope, this is the, this is the conditions which. You guys have been using the conditions in our book. I wanna commend you guys. You've done a great job. I'm talking to the B Z A members now. Uh, you guys have done a great job, uh, deciding what you've decided, uh. And you've done that straight out of our codes book, correct? And have you seen this? Have you seen, you have, haven't you Sammy?
Yeah, the minimum block.
Right, right. Have you seen it Kate? Do you want?
There it is, it's on, yeah, she's got it on.
We're hitting so modern, I don't know.
I know.
Sammy, what do you think about this?
I think he gives us some guidelines, uh. Yeah, he gives us some guidelines on. Making those tough decisions. If it's, if it's in the, you know, if it's questionable in one area or the other. It does give us more guidelines.
I will tell you, it puts a lot of, uh. Puts a lot of burden on you guys, do you know?
Deal with this, it's actually pretty vague.
Yeah, cause I mean peaceful enjoyment of adjacent properties, that, that's very vague. That's not, that's.
Well, I, I think it's ambiguous on purpose. Do you not, do you not think that Anna?
I do like the negatively affect neighbor, neighboring property values. That is, that is basically the biggest part of our job. Is to make sure we don't affect neighboring property values. I do like that, but peaceful enjoyment is pretty vague. Somebody may wanna run around their yard with no clothes on and peaceful enjoyment. I think that's pretty vague.
Uh, it, it's rather, uh, it's, it's rather ambiguous and I think that's, I think it's written that a way to give you guys.
Leeway.
A great amount of leeway, which is, which is what it should do.
But it gives us interpretation of the presenter.
That's true.
Read a lot into the presenter as much as you can read and understand kinda where they're coming from. That means a lot. If you leave the vagueness, you know, you can read into that.
That's true.
If that makes.
Do you have a problem, either one of you? Michael, have you read it?
Just now.
What do you think?
What does that affect too? And she's on there too.
I'm reading right now. Give me like a couple more minutes.
Hey, she's, she's the smartest. I was gonna ask her last. She could, she could negatively affect all of y'all, but, uh.
Well, we're almost looking at it from a standpoint of a appellate court judge.
Yeah, uh, Michael, as a layman.
It just applies to four lots or less.
Correct.
It's not got anything with major subdivisions.
Nothing to do with major subdivision.
Just something similar to what Baines Orchard, the B Z A turned down on the Baines Orchard a few weeks ago.
Something, yeah, sim- very similar.
So, so, you know, a quick skim of it, it's vague and, and it allows some interpretation from those that's on the boards. I don't have any, I don't see anything that jumps out and says, I like, I like that the increased traffic. And compared, that, that's a concern in the rural communities. You start adding houses and, uh. And the environmental degradation, you know, flood and farmland that joins these things, so.
I feel when it comes to these things, vague should never be in there.
Do what?
I think when it comes to these types of things, planning in zones and Board of Appeals. Vague should never be in anything. Vague should never be in any law or any rule when it comes to government. It should be black and white. We're not judges. We're not here to interpret law.
But, but, but Rodney, the first thing in, in zoning, when you look at it. Monetary values cannot be taken under consideration by the planning commission nor the B Z A. And every time we've had a presenter come up and present on behalf of the owners, the first thing out of their mouth is. This gentleman has spent this much money, or this is gonna affect my heirs this much. The planning commission should decide what is the best use of that land under the laws as written. And if you go specific and don't, then you, you're gonna eliminate as much as you're gonna have. A little, a little vagueness to allow interpretation as a positive, so that people can get what they need when they need.
I don't agree with that. I believe when it comes to the government rules, it should be pretty black and white.
Well, if it is black and white, then you put a stamp on every lot out there that it's got to fit in this.
And this.
And being, being in, I mean, I've been in here eleven years. There's not, I haven't seen probably a handful that's been signed. And the only ones that have been signed, most of them are obviously. You know, that was already. Right, already said.
You, you, you take, you take that C one that y'all approved or not, typically I'd be one hundred percent against it and I'm, and I'm sitting there going. That needs to be approved, it fits.
Well, it's in the U G B two, I think.
It, it, it fits. Now, I can't, I mean. But if you went black and white, that was killed right then.
No, it wasn't because black and white said it was on a main arterial road and it was.
But, but it, it also could have been killed for drainage. It didn't have a site plan, et cetera, et cetera. I could argue both sides of it.
Well, he couldn't do any of that till he did his site plan.
He still, he still got.
He gotta do all that. He would have to do that to begin with.
But if we, right now, we just, you know, like, it has a, a provision here that said flag lots. Right now, there's no access to flag lots and there's somebody presented B Z A a few weeks ago that got approved, rightfully so. Because his dad had a lease on the front part of the property and he needed to build on the back and it was a nine acre tract. He should have been approved. That was the right decision. That was a hardship, a true hardship. So, so, I mean, but if you went by the black and white rules, it would have never passed. And that's why you need some flexibility. If you don't have flexibility, you're gonna.
I don't. Worse than everything else. Feel the words peaceful enjoyment or flexibility, that's just a little too.
I think, I, I, I mean, negatively affecting property values also could be saying you could build a commercial lot. It could raise property values, but it would negatively affect my way a lot. I mean.
That's, raising property values isn't a negative effect.
It is if you don't wanna sell.
That, it, that's not looked at that way.
Well, here's, here's the deal folks. I don't think anyone can say for, with surety. That you negatively or positively affect property values until after that thing's done and it's sitting there. You see what I'm saying?
If you're gonna put a junkyard beside a person's house, it's gonna affect the person's house.
I want.
A junkyard.
Junkyard.
I mean, there are things that you can go, yeah, that's going to affect your.
That's true. That is, that is true.
Well, but if you put, I mean, if the city of Manchester puts a lettuce factory across the road from a farm, you just killed that farm.
Put a what?
A lettuce plant.
A lettuce plant, just, just for zoning, you just took a ninety year old lady's property. That she's making income off the farming and put me as a farmer, since I farm, at risk of killing eight hundred thousand square foot of lettuce. But the city of Manchester didn't take that into account, plus they sold it for ten thousand dollars an acre below the property value. So, I mean, if we're gonna argue property values from zoning, I can argue both ways.
Alright, I, I think this is an argument no one can win.
I agree.
Uh.
I feel like I don't let people's emotions get involved in this, so their peaceful enjoyment isn't gonna persuade me much other than.
That, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause there's usually a lot of feelings every meeting, and if you took everybody's feelings into account, I mean, it just.
I had one of the nicest young men in Manchester to send me a text after the first airport road. Uh, meeting. And told me what a sorry job I did. And I said, I did, I did, I didn't do a good job. I said, but I didn't have much of a chance to do a good job. With, and he said, well, you let the meeting get out of hand and everybody got mad. I said, no, they were mad when they walked in the door.
Yeah, they were mad for they got here.
They were mad when they got there. And, uh, and they only got madder, but after everybody got their say. It all kinda settled down a little bit. Sometimes you gotta go through the storm to see the sunshine on the other side, so.
Sometimes you gotta let people be in.
Do what?
You gotta let people be in.
That's right. Hey, what's Sam Edwards always say? Sam says everybody needs to talk. Uh.
I like the part in there also about the agricultural or, or rural character consideration.
Yeah, like I say, it's all, it gives the board of zoning, you know, board of zoning appeals. A lot of leeway to go, and I think it, I'm a little bit siding with him and a little bit siding with you. There's gotta be some leeway for choice in there, in my opinion. So, uh, we can talk about this one all afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, with that, so, so would this apply, I'm just gonna sit there, if somebody come in with a family carve out.
Uh.
A, a carve out of, you know, I got eight, an eight acre tract. And I wanna give my kid two acres to build a house on, and they need all the setbacks and all the other zoning requirements. And then this could be a palpable of that poses.
Well, that is, there is a, there is a thought about that, is it there Cindy? Uh, Kurt, you wanna help answer that question?
Well, that's up to the B Z A.
I think we need to have a special family variance.
Mm-hmm.
Others think that this covers that, because it, it's a hardship. If you can't give your son or daughter. An acre or two of land, that's wrong, and I agree with that. Uh, whether we need to have that family variance spelled out like we were talking with Amanda when we had our training session. Uh, that's gonna be, that's gonna come later down the road, but there is gonna be a family variance of some kind.
I think we just need to put a timeline on the family variance. They need to stay there in that location for X amount of years. Cause you could put, well, I'm gonna give this to my son, we're gonna build a house, sell it, give it back to, give another one to my son. He builds four or five houses, you know.
Well. What about one exception per child?
Well, the Baines Road was a little bit of this perfect category, which we talked about. Every lot is put into a different relative's name.
Like I have a, I have a ten acres.
He's got enough land to add five acres, though, what was the problem?
Separated to each kid and it'd be okay or not?
Well, I, I think it's gotta be a minor subdivision, so.
A minor.
My concern is the people that own five.
Four parables.
Can't come up with five.
You know.
Right. If you, if you own five and you wanna give one and build a second lot in the country in an A one. Which is where all this started, right? If we just go back to the genesis of where this started, it's all there for. But it, it shouldn't hold up a kid from getting an acre given to him by his mom and dad to build a house on.
That's why I think there should be a separate, and that's what I was saying in the A one.
Rodney, you, you're talking like I'm.
It should be a separate, and I'm probably, in the A one family, less than five acre variance, in less than five acre.
He gonna get that off him.
Yeah, let me.
Yeah.
Can be done twice as long, can be done twice. I, cause I mean, you may have five kids. But, but let's be honest, are all of them gonna live with you?
Right.
But if you have, you're gonna have one or two out of your five that may need to be given an acre to live next to you or wanna live next to. Who, who you hope take care of you when you get old, you know, so you don't have to go to a home. So, I, this was ideas to throw out there in the own family variance. Uh, A one family, less than five acre variance can be done twice, as long as it meets setbacks, road frontage, a minimum lot size. For grandparents, parents, children, and grandchildren, one acre minimum. Now, I don't have a problem with the time thing. I think Williamson County had a two year.
You say ten with.
No, that was for Mr. Floyd, who was wanting a variance off a friend, not a family member.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we have nothing for a friend. That may actually cover Mr. Floyd. And I said, Mr. Floyd, maybe we could work something out where if your friend is willing to give you an acre. That for a non-family member, a one acre lot or more, that meets road frontage setbacks and everything else. With a five to ten years that the person that gave up the lot.
Years at some point in time.
Cannot divide again. This would, cause our concern is to y'all, subdivision people. No subdivision guy's gonna build a lot every five years. He'll go broke. So, uh, this would be, my buddy wants a lot, I've got seven acres, I'm gonna give him one acre. But if I do, my seven is locked up for a period of whatever we decide, five, ten years, or whatever y'all feels fair.
Did, you did see what Amanda had sent us on the family variance thing, right? You, you, you saw that?
I did not.
It's twenty-five years in Williamson County.
If you do a family variance, it must stay with your family.
Ten is more than reasonable.
Oh, I think so too.
Yeah, yeah, that's, and what y'all did the other night at the meeting where y'all gave the. The son the approval for behind his mother and stuff. That, that agree, I, I agree with that a hundred percent. And stuff.
But you could read that into the presentation.
Right.
And that's what I was getting at with the presentation. Ninety-nine percent of the time, when they step up and walk up there, you can read that into what they're presenting. And I'm not saying.
And everybody's sharp, but, or, but you can read that into whether they're truthful or whether they're not. I would like to look at a variance or possibly where if you owned a piece of property. You could put a mother-in-law slash grandmother's house and have two residents on one property.
You can already in our zoning book.
Over fifteen acres.
Over fifteen.
Over fifteen acres.
For people whose parent, cause I mean, let's face it, people lose their whole entire farms going to old folks homes.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
And you can't drive across the county every time to go take care of your elder and grandmother.
A lot of, I know, I know Rutherford County, if you go under five acres in the county. And you, you got to go under subdivision, county subdivision guidelines for the lot. I mean, I know that for a fact.
Well, that should, that's fair, but I mean.
Well, it's, but it, it, it goes back to the, a different set of rules. But I, I, I think once you go under that, it should go under county subdivision guidelines.
Well, they would have to meet, if you gave, like, like Steve was talking about there. If you give your son or grandson or whoever, uh, an acre. It's got to meet the setbacks, it's gotta have the sea water, guy, the road frontage. Gotta have, I, basically everything, the same thing that is a subdivision is required.
But if you had, if you had that list, but the home, when they brought it in, the percentage checked off.
Well, it's in, it's in the, uh, codes book already on that part.
A one setbacks were set because of fire, so.
Yeah.
Whether I agree with it or not, it was set because of that. I, you, I cannot go back and say for any reason you can override safety.
No, you shouldn't.
So, that, he's gonna have to meet the setbacks in an A one.
In, in A one only.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
But, but then that, you know, if your son can't meet the setbacks in A one, I'm sorry, but that's a safety issue. That's not, that's not a, that's not an aesthetic issue, so.
Right.
Five acres, you should be able to make that work.
Oh, I would hope.
Oh, yeah.
Unless you just really.
And again, that's, that's worth pointing out, that we're talking about the A one area outside the U G B.
Yes.
You, you know, people don't understand that yet. This is outside the U G B. Inside the U G B, it's just like it always was.
Well, that's where you want your growth.
That's right.
That's where you want. Uh, also, we was talking about the family variance and stuff, conditions. We were talking about son, you know, kids, grandson, grandkids, stuff like that. Excuse me. I do believe we need to set something on that. If you just say family variance. Then what's gonna stop me from coming in with my.
Third cousin.
Third cousin, fourth cousin or something.
Wanted the direct lineage.
It sounds immediate family.
Yeah.
Immediate family, okay.
The grandkid.
Right. Right, right. No, that's what I agree, I mean, I agree with that.
Somebody claiming it's a cousin, and I feel like there should be something there, it's your job to prove it. You have to show up with proof, with birth certificates and whatnot, this is your job.
Is in Amanda's, the one that, that they're looking at right now, it is in Amanda's.
Not our job to figure it out, it's your job to prove to us.
Right.
You're in this line.
If we're finished discussing this, let's get a vote on this, if we can. Rodney, you, you ready to vote on this, or you're, you're gonna vote no, aren't you?
But you, but you got, like I say, I mean, you also still gotta come. The proposed, proposed subdivision may be subject to review and recommendations by the planning commission. Prior to the final action of the zoning of appeal, so. That's still there.
That they don't realize, I think, a lot of folks come before the BZA and they get a variance and they say, I'm good. No, you still gotta go before the planning commission. Right, I know you. But we, and we can't turn them down for the variance that you granted. It has to be for setbacks or something like that, and uh. Uh, I have, can I get a motion?
I make a motion, we should approve it.
I got a motion to approve, uh, the conditions for variance. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You'll second? Boy, you wasn't very sure. Uh, I have a motion, we've discussed it enough, but if anybody's got another word they wanna say, go ahead. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Oppose? Okay, we got, we've got three and one. But he's, there's just three of us, isn't there?
Good gracious.
I'm sorry. I didn't, didn't have.
I, can I bring something up that I'd like us to think about in the next meeting?
Sure.
We're obviously not wanting people in A one and we're trying to push them towards the cities and that's great. Uh, the UGB, urban growth boundary, there was a thing that even Dennis Hunt and I both agreed on. Back before all this started, I know, imagine, he actually started it and pushed me, but it was the twenty-five foot easement. Not in A one, but in the urban growth boundary. Cause we, we argued that by law, the courts, if you have a piece of property, can only give you twenty-five feet to get to that property and use it. Uh, and as I said in meetings before, if we're not gonna be building out there, we need to push people towards the city. So we need to make the areas closer to the city, which have better roads, better water, and they won't be driving through the country, they'll be going into the city. And honestly, most of them will probably put their kids in the city, whether it be Manchester, Telahoma school systems. So, I would like us to think, not tonight, but about doing the twenty-five foot easement inside the urban growth boundary area.
Cindy, make sure and get this down. That we will discuss it at the next meeting and vote on it, alright, and that'll, that away we'll, everybody will have plenty of.
Again, that will open up for people and our children and stuff to live closer to the city and less homes out in the country.
Say it, open it up to twenty-five foot easement, they only have to have twenty-five foot instead of fifty foot.
Right.
But what does that do to flag lots?
It may cause flag lots, but we're wanting the growth in the urban growth boundary because that's the name. But, yeah, so, but it keeps them out of, and people, some people actually like the flag lot, so. And I get you don't, but we, we, we can't go off personal opinions of what we like to look at. But there are people that have land, that have a twenty-five foot. Well, the, my neighbor's got a thirty-five foot driveway and she's got a five thousand square foot house back there, and that brings in very good tax money. And she couldn't do that today with the fifty foot, and she's in the urban growth, she's one mile from the Telahoma city limits. So, it worked for her. She flags behind me, but it works for her.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I've got farms that only have thirty foot access to.
Yeah, so. I'm just trying to shift people being able to get houses from one spot to another.
Well, you know, and, and you know, what Rodney said in the beginning, a judge can only grant twenty-five feet. That's all, if, if you're landlocked, he can only grant twenty-five feet.
So you could have a thousand acres and there'd be a bunch of one acre people on the road. And he comes in and says, I'm giving you twenty-five feet between these two houses, under Coffey County rule right now, you can't do nothing with it.
Yeah, you're right.
When I first bought my property several years ago, first property I bought, I had a fifteen foot right away.
Good gracious, that's a little too much.
But I'm just saying, I had a fifteen foot right away.
I talked to electric, you can go underground, you don't have to have the forty foot, if you go underground on your electric and the water, and it, twenty-five foot will get you back there. Urban growth boundary goes before the city anyways, but they have to follow our rules.
The family, are they still considering to add it?
I think we need to look at the family, I mean.
So move the family to the meeting after that.
No, we could do them both in one meeting, can't we?
Oh, no.
The family variance.
Not a whole lot of people urging the family thing.
Well, I think, if I, if I may, I think, I think the, the, some of the negative or adverse effects of the five acre. Minimum has been the restrictions on families. And, and that, I think the intent was major subdivisions in the A one.
That's what I said.
I know that's a bad thing in Coffey County, but if you could do step systems with a proper fire protection, inside the UGB. Narrow those setbacks down if they have fire protection.
They are narrow, they're twenty-five feet.
But if you had a step system and you could get rid of a sole site.
Yeah.
And get them narrowed up more, you know.
We have a step system in the county.
I, I, I'm one that works, one that works and maybe.
And.
And maybe get the sewer fixed in there.
And, and Rutherford County, right now, we've got about seventy step systems. And stuff. Right, that's what I'm saying, but yeah, we've got about seventy and they work, but.
And encourage density, I'd rather see the density inside the UGB.
Right. Right.
Of course, eventually the city would end up gobbling, of course, I'm gonna, I'm gonna die before the city gobbles up another inch.
You would, you would be surprised.
The way the states change the rules, if there's anybody between you and the city, you can't get in, that doesn't want in. They can't just grab you anymore. You got to touch the city and ask. They can't do the road thing anymore either, cause both these cities were really bad about running down a road and going like that. And then you had all these county houses, and, and Raleigh Creek Road, you got a county house, city house, county house, city house, they can't do that anymore.
Well, Buck Canyon, Buck Canyon and Rutherford County, Buck Canyon is actually seedy limits, but they're, how they did that, they actually used the interstate. They went down the interstate to Buck Canyon and classified that as city.
Push the people coming in towards the edges of the city, the suburbs.
The urban growth boundary is where it needs, yeah.
Yeah, the urban growth boundary is where it needs to be, it's the cheapest place to do infrastructure too, because all the infrastructure you need is just a mile down the road.
Right, correct.
Roads, the roads are there, the traffic, the, the farmers are happy because we're not getting.
Nobody's farming down there. Where at? Where at? Where? Maple Springs, is that inside the urban growth boundary? When they do that, do that sole site or that supersite that they never gonna happen, that they rub their genie bottle. You're gonna be so rich, you won't even worry about it anyways. I get it, I get it. Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about, you can tell when they drop lower values, golly, they're not gonna put a prison there, are they?
So, we're gonna bring up.
I want, that's not jobs.
Family variance.
Alright. The next meeting, Rodney's gonna give us a real good report on the family variance.
Yeah.
And, uh. As far as this meeting goes, if anybody has anything else, we, we've got the conditions, we've got the definitions. Uh, we're prepared now to talk about the family variance. Uh.
Impossible UGB twenty-five foot.
Yeah.
That's right, and uh, you got that correct.
Are we voting on the family variance next meeting?
I, I would like to, okay, now, I'm not gonna guarantee that that gets to.
We can always push it if we're not totally there yet.
Well, we can still, if we vote on it next meeting, we can still get it on the agenda. For the full commission in October, correct?
No, you can't either, cause the next meeting.
Right, and that's probably.
The very, the family will next month, next month.
Several county commissioners, about two things is all we need to send to them to handle.
At a time?
At a time, and I don't blame them, they got enough on their plate.
If we do, next meeting, it would go to November's.
Go to November's.
Which that's not gonna end the world, people can't wait thirty days.
Right.
And you can, and the, the bor- border zone appeals can still grant a family variance due to hardship.
Well, they did last meeting. Y'all did the last meeting.
So it's not, but now, if you, when you read that Rodney, you're gonna find out that she says. That that can be done at the planning commission level, that that, that.
The hardship can?
No, the, the one, the variance that she wrote, she said can be done at the planning commission level, which would be okay too. So.
Which I have thought that in the past too, cause I read a lot about it, and I did see a lot of that, and a lot of counties do that.
Well, I, I think it's, it just makes sense, you know, it just makes sense.
So, this one is gonna be in the planning commission. Remember, we can't make up rules, we can only go by the spirit and intent of the code.
Right.
I mean, it doesn't say those words in our directions.
Yeah, I need to, I need to put in there.
What we have to go by. So if there's no spirit and intent there, it's hard to make a decision that way, of what the code says, does that make sense? So if I'm sitting here looking at it, I don't see the spirit, I, I can't, I don't know, I'm looking with blinders on this.
Or you're talking about the family variance, it's a.
Any of it, yeah, even this or.
If you have a family member, you can kinda see that, but yes, you're exactly right, I, I think, uh.
So like, that's what I was, when I said, when I mentioned the first one, somewhat vague, is because I can't see the spirit and intent there. So, you get a completely different board, your decisions could be totally opposite of what ours might be. I'm trying to look at it with blinders on and understand what you guys are doing.
And he, but, and here's the thing, Kayden, the next, the only peo- the only thing that can overcome. A decision by the board of zone appeals is a court of law. So, when they come to us to get a plat after getting the, uh, variance from you guys. We ha- we can't use that variance against them, we have to accept that variance no matter what it is. And then go by the rest of, the rest of our codes.
Well, another way anything gets overturned in court is if there's no backing behind it.
That's right.
So, if we, if we were to make a decision that's unfounded, that would be an avenue for somebody to be able to overturn something.
Absolutely.
But, if it's so vague, it could possibly happen, and that's why I mentioned that, if there's not something that shows. We can't articulate and say, okay, this is why I made it into this decision. This is the spirit and intent of the code, this is the direction of the commission, the voting body wanna go with, we didn't just pull it out there.
That's right.
We should throw hardship in the reading for the family variance. Just have that word in there.
Well, well, I was agreeing with Rodney.
Yeah.
This is for a hardship.
Steve, what about the one acre off the farm, do you wanna bring that up?
Uh, we can, we're having a good discussion, uh, uh.
I actually have to leave.
Why don't you explain what you're talking about?
Um, if an individual has a farm, they, spouse passes away. One spouse member is still there, they need to sell the farm to stay in a nursing home or to stay in something else. Can we do a minor subdivision for that one house existing residence? Do a one acre variance or whatever minimum variance for that house?
I think that would fall under the family.
I think it could, or hardship. I think that's a, that's a perfect part.
Yeah, because you're trying to, like I say, for their health.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, that would go medical, you know, why and stuff, I mean, yeah, that would go under hardship, but we definitely need to put it in there.
Your family, I'm leaving, I'm selling off the whole farm but me, but one spot for the family. It most likely, if she's going into a home, it'll be a child that she's giving that house to.
She even wants to stay in the house.
Yeah.
You know, I just need the money to survive.
Would not do that, that's.
John, have we got you good and confused?
I, I either need to leave or, and y'all can keep talking.
No, where, where, why don't you make a motion for us to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
I have a motion to adjourn at a second.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
The only thing I'm, you were talking about property value, it's like negative, uh, under there four, three, negatively affecting neighborhood property values. So, how does that, I mean, is there a difference between affecting a person requesting a property value? Or where does that come in? Where does property values, value play in, in the stock?
It's to, like, keep them from putting a junkyard beside your house, with things of that nature, like if they wanted to put a. Hog barn beside a residential neighborhood, that's going to definitely, of course, that's A one, so you could.
Yeah.
But, and, so that's A one, but you could.
If they wanna put a hog barn.
A junkyard or. You know, a junkyard or, I, I don't think, come up, uh, a halfway house for prisoners that are still, you know, that.
Right. Where it would affect that person that's already there.
You know, what's scary is there are some things that state. You know what's scary is there are some things that state.